Welcome back after the new year to our workshop for January 15th. I'd like to call the order this meeting. It's six o'clock on the dot in the absence of the mayor. At this time, I'll turn it over to the city manager and we're just going to roll down our workshop agenda this evening. We're going to try to limit the time because we have to obviously move from here to council. So trying to limit the time to 10 minutes per speaker on each subject item if possible.
Or vice mayor if we can, 10 kind of totals. So I'm going to ask the speakers to do about five or so minutes and then allow for question answer just because we've got to get through this agenda.
Okay.
So great. So in the absence of time, I'd like to bring forward the chairman of the airport advisory board to come and speak to us. And if you will, Dick, please sit at the head of the table.
Hi, Steve. You suffer through these meetings, you know what I'm talking about?
So we have today on the agenda to discuss the potential of an airport trust and we've asked the advisory chairman to come chat with us about that. And I'll hand out the document that is the draft for the trust. If you'll take one down and pass it around.
Great. I think most all of you are familiar with what we're doing out there or what we have done out there, the good, the bad, and the ugly. So at this meeting with our time limitations, I think what I'd like to do is just quickly let you know, we're requesting to become a trust authority to administer the airport. And preface my first remarks with this trust that we're proposing that you have in front of you. We'll make, there will be no authority taken away from the council. The council has the same authority that it has. It has the ultimate decision authority because it controls the purse strings. We would have to submit a budget just like we do now. The only thing that the trust would provide that's different than what we're doing now is the ability for the board members which would, who would become trustees to get involved a little deeper than they are able to right now in projects at the airport with businesses and aviation industry people that will ultimately end up in revenue generating type activities out there. We're in a world of hurt for revenue generating activities out there because of a lot of the things that have transpired originally. And so what we have done over the last couple of months have worked this problem to find areas where we could actually generate some revenue out of the airport. That revenue will turn around and be reinfested. We have what we call in the aviation scenario, a jet competent airport in the fact that we now have a 5,000 foot runway, we have all of the taxiways, we have the lighting, we have the communications, we have the security fence, we have all the things that we've been able to write grants for and the FAA pay for. And we're, we did really well. We spent a lot of money out there, as most of you know. And the idea is, is we've won awards in the state and from the feds for what we've done out there. Now we've reached the point where that airport is ready to handle that kind of traffic. We've reached the point now where we have to turn that airport into what they call a jet-ready airport. That means when those folks land and they get out of their, they get out of their airplane, there's a ground power unit for them, the fuel services are up to speed for handling those type of airplanes, communications to our local hotels, restaurants, catering services, all the things that those people require are there. Our dilemma is the FAA doesn't pay for those kinds of things. That's the sponsors' responsibility. And we've known that going in upfront. The bottom line is, is that we feel after talking to other airports statewide and in our FAA region, the best way to handle that is through a trust system. They are able to work with local industry, national industry, other folks that invest in airport-type properties to get involved in partnerships, percentages on hangars that are being built, fuel sales, a lot of these things that are endemic to a airport, which we cannot and have not taken advantage of. The trust will give us the opportunity to get involved in those things. So that's why we're asking you to kind of consider that. And that's a real nutshell kind of a thing. If nothing else, I might ask if there are additional questions that we might have an opportunity to do this in greater depth at a later time.
Yeah, I mean, for me, I'd like to be able to review the trust agreement that they've proposed here and then, you know, maybe set up a time, you know, as well as the council can read through it and then maybe reconvene, you know, for specific questions. Unfortunately, I don't have the time tonight.
Sure.
But to give the council enough time to kind of delve through and develop questions and set back up at another time.
One of the propositions from Larry Stevens, city manager of Edmond, the Edmond City Council has not brought this before their city council. This has not been an agenda item. One of the ideas was that if this council entertained the idea of moving forward with a trust, that we would host a joint meeting with Edmond to potentially make a decision. So you could either choose to workshop it again, you could choose to go into a meeting, a joint meeting with the city of Edmond's council. So there's a few ways to do it. I want to agree with the sentiment that the airport has momentum right now. It definitely does have momentum and we're seeing better things. Our job is, my job specifically, and as I've spoken with the chairman last Friday, my role is best addressed long-term for the city. And so I will, as I shared with Dick, I have probably only two concerns. So the rest, these are my two concerns. There will be an increase of expenditures. I want to be as transparent as possible. They're very small right now. When I say an increase of expenditures, the reason for that, if the airport becomes, the advisory board becomes a trust, they would have to do an independent audit, for example, and that can run $2,000 to $5,000 or so. And the city still has the budget. We would be making that budget, approving that budget, though that authority and power would not be taken away from the council at all. So there just would be, I have to look at what's that increased expenditure. Number two is that I support the stability of the airport manager management, which is through the city rather than a board. And the reason for that is because though the airport advisory board today is fantastic and has this great momentum, my job is to look long-term. And what I fear is 10 years from now, what does that look like with an airport manager answering to a board rather than through the structure of the city, the local government? So those are probably the two that I wanted to bring to your attention.
Well, I think probably the rest of the council would agree that we need to kind of read through it.
What attorney set this up?
Yeah.
The Fannie.
We, over the last several months, we've had meetings with Randall and Steve Murdock and Larry Stevens and also with Matt when he was here. So there's been a lot of effort put into the document.
Are you saying that you don't think your network can grow unless we go with this trust thing? Is that what you're saying?
Um.
Because I don't believe that.
I'm not saying that, no. What I'm saying is, is that we are at a point now where we need to go and grow efficiently.
Do you think the city of Guthrie and the city of Edmond can do that?
I think they can. I think they won't be as efficient or be able to do it as quickly, for instance, just a quick, for instance. I know about, I know about the city council in Edmond. None of them belong to the National Business Aviation Association, the Aerospace Alliance, AOPA, National Antique and Experimental Aircraft. If you don't belong to those, you don't know what's going on in the industry. If you do, you go to their conferences and you participate at the right levels and you come back to Guthrie and say, hey, this is what we need to be doing.
Personally, I feel like our airport manager, we can grow that airport fine leaving it the way it is. And that's how I feel about it. I'm sorry. I think we've got great people out there and I personally, I mean, I'm willing to look at this some more, but personally, I like the people we got in place and I like what we're doing and I want to keep it city by the city and by Edmond. That's how I feel about it.
Yeah, it's a fair statement. I think maybe we too have the ability for the remaining balance of us to kind of go through it, check up a few questions and then maybe reconvene like we talked about.
Good. I appreciate it. That'd be good. So at this point, then we would just go ahead and set that at a future date.
Yeah.
I'll keep you posted. I'll set it with them and the calendar date.
Okay. That'd be good. All right. Thanks for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks for your time. Thanks for it all.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Number two on the agenda, discussion on drought conditions. We have brought in Bill Myers, our engineer, and Maxine will pass out a packet regarding water conservation and drought. And if Mr. Myers will...
Do a rain dance, please.
Do a rain dance and bring us rain. We're thankful for the rain that we had recently, but we could use some more. Bill, you have about five minutes to kind of present and then allow us to speak. I know that Erin Ryburn took some pictures of Guthrie Lake and Liberty Lake and took some video that we'd be happy to show if you would like it any during this to show. So I'll have Erin roll that footage after you get started.
Sure. The information that I pulled together was just mainly the, what we have on the books as far as what we do with water shortages. I did a compilation of the last six weeks of the amount of water that Woody is throwing, pumping into the Liberty Lake and how it has gone up. Also, a report from OML on water rationing, the cities and towns in the area. And then the most recent was Norman. And then Councilman Wood sent us a graph on Oklahoma climatology survey and it gives you the five-year tendencies. And then I pulled off of the OWRB website, our drought monitor of the Oklahoma, and then the last page is just national. So that's just a bit of information that you might can...
Well, one thing, we went through the available data and we looked at, you know, the area of our two lakes. We looked at the volume of the lakes based on the survey that was done probably in the late 90s, early 2000s as far as the volume goes. And what we came up with today was that if we did not get another drop of water, okay, zero runoff into the lakes, and if Cottonwood Creek just totally ran dry, that, you know, we could survive with our lakes for about a year, okay? Because there's a lot of evaporation happens off the lakes. That's what zero runoff. Now, we're going to have some runoff, okay? I mean, I believe we will, okay? You said, Lord will and the creek don't rise. Well, Lord will and the creek rises, okay? So that's where you are basically as far as the situation. I mean, the other people like in the information, did everybody get this packet, I guess? You get this packet, this one here next?
Yes.
Okay. You know, the people that are rationing now, I mean, think about it, I see on this list, like, a lot of these are my clients, they are, most of them buy water from Long Chimney. And Long Chimney is really, they were on the news, I think, last night, Long Chimney Water. So they all buy water from Long Chimney, so they're required to ration as well. The bottom of this list, the bottom six on there are all related to each other. So, you know, Barbsville, I'm not familiar with that. Glencoe, well, Glencoe buys water from Long Chimney as well. And Lawton, I'm not familiar with their situation. So, you know, as far as your water supply, you know, the buzzword now is the drought. There is a drought, okay? I'm not discounting there is a drought. Everybody's, you know, talking everywhere I go across the state, everybody's talking about it, you know, they're talking about reuse, they're talking about all the different things we need to do. But as far as any actions you need to take right now, you know, the most immediate thing you could do is rationing, but there's no need to ration now because nobody's, everybody's using minimal water now, unless you want to limit the number of flushes we do per day or something in the house, which you can't do that. So really, at this point, there's nothing, I don't see us needing to take any drastic action right now as far as, you know, rationing or something like that. And, you know, the other thing that, you know, even, I went to the Water Resources Board meeting today, you know, towns are talking about water rates, you know, like we do get into the summers, you know, you can look at rationing, odd-even stuff, you know, one of the best ways, and I hate to say this, but to curb usages by your rates. I mean, that really backs down the usage when your rates are higher, you know? That's something to think about too in the future. So that's pretty much all I have to offer, I guess, is that. So yes, the lakes are lowered, like right now. I think you've got some new data. I'm sorry.
One minute.
Just look at where you're at.
I'm over my time?
No, you're in time. You've got one minute left.
There's no lake.
Yeah, there's not much lake.
No.
So they are downs.
There's not a trust.
They are down. But anyway, Cottonwood, we are able to pump more out of Cottonwood now it's come up because the recent rains. And so that's a good deal. So Cottonwood's been a real positive thing.
How often do they check pollution in Cottonwood Creek?
We are the other people that...
How much, how often do you monitor it?
I think they at least do it once a month. I know that much.
Well, that's good. That's good. All right.
When you said that, you mean DEQ or...
Well, and our guys too.
Our guys too, yes.
And the Water Resources Board, and then City of Oklahoma City Marketers as well.
Up on the screen, as we're going to discuss when our wells here in a moment, just to kind of get an idea of what we're looking at, just in case you haven't driven by the vision anytime recently, that's... Still refer to it as drainage ditch, but...
Mineral Wells Flats or...
Flats. Gayward Park.
It's a bridge to nowhere right now.
There it is.
It's Bercher Park.
Bercher.
We can say that to these guys.
Because he's not there.
They had to turn on there and that was what they did.
Is that it? Want to just say that whenever?
No, he should be there. I know, there's more cars.
Ace for you.
Hey, look, it's...
I'm gonna say it from over there, so.
There's your smart car.
Really?
Yeah.
It's not mine.
Well, that's us. That's not a pond. Okay. Well, I was going to look for Guthrie Lake pictures and, sorry, technical difficulties. Oh, there it is.
Guthrie Lake.
So kind of get an idea of last time you went out there and looked at it. There's a pier.
How deep is Guthrie Lake, do we know?
It's not deep enough right now.
It's like 20, it's 20 or 25 feet, I think, at the dam.
With it this dry right now, Mr. Myers, wouldn't it be a good idea to dig it out some more so when it finally does rain, we have a lot of water?
It would, not a bad time. It's not a bad time if we can afford it. That's, it's costly to dredge.
Then by bringing shovels.
Yeah, there you go.
And that note, any other questions? There's two minutes left in this hour.
Two minutes left? Obviously, I appreciate your work on it and being, you know, and I know it's, Councilman Hazelwood has expressed her concern and just to be prepared as we move into the summer months, obviously, and it's while we're here and, you know, obviously, if we have to do some type of rationing, we'll obviously have to enact it, so.
And there is adopted code for a drought contingency plan. We have stage one and stage two at any time that the council also desires to do, maybe recommended rationing. You know, we can always educate the public, we can start doing that in newsletters about use. But I agree with Mr. Myers, when you start alarming the public, whenever it's winter months, it's, they're not filling their swimming pools, they're not doing slip-in slides.
Well, they could fix their leaky faucets and their stool runs 24 hours.
In our next city newsletter, we'll do that exact thing. We'll write that in there. Absolutely. Wonderful.
But it would be nice if we could come up with an idea to dig that lake deeper right now so we could have a lot more water in it when we finally do get some rain, if ever.
I was, I had this, I sent this to you, this graph, because I was, I had some conversations with the ACOG geologists and asked them about, is this a, you know, are we always going to be low? Is it a cycle thing? And so he sent me this graph to show it's very much a cycle. And so we'll have water at some point or another, but he said this could very well be a five-year to eight-year drought, just depending on how it goes.
I agree up to 10.
So regardless, it's something that's, we're going to constantly deal with and it's not that, I've heard people, I had people concerned with pulling out too much water in Guthrie Lake. The problem is, is, you know, the water's low. That's just, it's low everywhere. And the reality is, I think it was last year and the year before, that many of the municipalities in the state were rationing when we weren't because we had our water plant. And so we are actually doing better than a lot of cities. That might not last forever, but we are doing pretty well because of that water plant. So thank goodness for that.
Good segue, good timing.
Thank you. Without, and just to reassure, council staff continuously monitors this. We get ACOG reports on a bi-monthly. We will notify you of any significant changes and start to educate the public through leaky faucet fixing and stuff like that. Number three, discussion on mineral wells pond. We'll yield the time back to Mr. Myers. Yep, just right back. You can stay there a little while if you like.
Okay.
Do your rain dance.
There we go.
There has been a question since I've been here. I've heard from quite a bit of the public and ranging from students in the, you know, seventh grade on up to those not in school anymore about, why don't we fill mineral wells? So as we segue out of drought conditions into filling a pond, Bill, what are your thoughts?
Well, we looked at a number of options to fill it. You know, one thing we looked at was try and take our raw water from Guthrie or Liberty to fill it. You know, as you can tell, we probably, that's probably not a prudent idea, I mean, given where we are with our raw supply. We also looked at the option of, you know, drilling a couple of wells right there in the park, so to speak. And we think we can get a couple of wells in there. We believe we can. When we built the plant, we dealt with groundwater, we're building a plant, it's constantly, obviously the levels are a little bit lower now, obviously, but we feel like we can get wells that are of sufficient quantity to be able to fill the pond over time. When we filled overnight, okay, it's going to, you know, if we get one well that's 15, 20 gallons a minute, we're talking 90 to 100 days to fill it. But the sooner we do it, the better.
Mr. Myers?
Yes?
Mary, didn't Bill Thorne call you about the mineral...
Yes.
Idea?
Mm-hmm.
We had a citizen call, Mary Coffin and I. Mary, you want to tell them about it?
Well, Bill, I think I mentioned it at maybe one of the workshops. I thought I talked to somebody about it.
Well, he's still talking about it.
He, well, I guess the, obviously Mineral Wells Park was known for its minerals, so...
Yeah.
He's thinking maybe we could set it up again where we could actually use that maybe as some sort of attraction or something, I mean...
With the Artesian wells and all that?
Yes.
Yeah. They had shut it down. And I guess, what was that about, 19?
It's been a long time ago.
It's been a long time, but it's still there.
Okay. That would be an idea. So, and that goes into what we're saying, the water, there is groundwater there that we can get a hold of, whether we use the Artesian, maybe use that as a, as an attraction, let it flow over into the pond and maybe do a conventional well to get a jumpstart on it, so to speak. And we're only talking, you know, $5,000, maybe $7,500, something like that.
He wanted to see the mineral part of it brought back because it would attract people to come here and try it.
For medicinal purposes?
Yes, yes, yes.
Do we have any idea how many gallons per minute the Artesian even pushes out?
I don't. I have not looked at it. I haven't seen it. But do you think, it's Artesian-ing right now?
Oh, well, it drips all over the place. We've got several, but didn't they shut that down because of DEQ?
Well, we don't want people drinking out of it.
Right.
I don't know, you know, that's the other thing too, but as far as, really don't want them bathing in it if it's not potable supply. I don't know if we can, you know, that's, I know sulfur has a well, they have a sulfur well.
Well, it was a big deal and it was quite popular. Of course, I wouldn't run that even with the rest of us.
Have you ever tasted that sulfur well?
Down the sulfur?
Yeah.
I smelt it. They asked me to taste it and I wouldn't do it.
There was somebody, some, I was down there last summer with my girls and husband and there was a couple of girls come by and they said that they drank it because it keeps the mosquitoes away from them and I believe that.
That is a good idea. I guess the main thing is, I guess, we need to, you know, it can be filled with, like you said, with the groundwater somehow. I wouldn't recommend taking our water supply and trying to keep it filled because you, once we get it full, then we're going to have to keep it full and then it's going to be evaporating. And then, but, like someone told me the other day, an old timer said, you know, once the rains start again, all this discussion, this discussion goes away, you know? But, so if we at least get something going with the well to augment what we're doing now, I think that'd be a good idea.
Well, yeah, I agree that once it rains, well, it'll solve our problem, but we won't maintain it. And that's, I think that's been, one of the ideas is if we had a well in place, once we do have the water in it, then we can maintain it at a level.
Yeah. It's the main thing.
Yeah, with some type of float and, you know, it'll bring it on and start pumping water when we need it.
We could do that really relatively easily if we have the funds.
Okay.
I mean, the funds, really.
Question of the hour, you know, if council wants us to entertain this, we did not budget for it, you know, for this fiscal year. If that means that we want to take away other projects or if, you know, I have heard one of the, I heard the mayor speak about an individual in the community that may be willing to do a well. Our issue right now is that I do not, in parks especially, have that kind of funding. So that's, that's where, if council wants us to move forward with this, I'm going to have to come up with some creative ideas.
To give naming rights.
I'm sorry.
Naming rights.
You could, you could sell naming rights, which I am a big fan of.
Do, so, do you have any idea what the, I don't know, how deep, kind of an estimated?
I know, I know we did some of our, well, yeah, probably in that range. I know we hit water on the plant, we had like 55-foot deep columns, or piers on those, so we were in groundwater. We hit groundwater like 20 feet back then, 15 in places, so, yeah, so, you know, 150 feet or so, we'd probably be okay, probably. I'll talk to the local, you know, well driller who's doing some wells in the area. It'd be more like a, not a home well, but similar to a home well, is what it'd be. We'd have to get a permit from, not from DEQ, but from Water Board because it's a landscape well. They're going to treat this landscape well.
So a couple of workshops ago, we had three scenarios ranging from $18,000 to $55,000. Which plan is this one?
The first one.
It is.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm so used to doing municipal wells. Yeah, there we go, yeah. That'd be the first one, but I'm thinking more like, you know, like I said, 5,000, $7,500, just treat it like a home well, you know, with the pilus adapter and don't do all the check valves and sub-bow ground piping and all that stuff. The other thing is, there is an outlet pipe. There's a control structure that exists that doesn't need to be replaced. And I did estimate on it today of like $50,000 to replace it and is with the same type of stuff. I'm still looking at that a little more detail to see if we even have to have it, maybe we could, there's a way to get around even doing it. So that's out there. I, it's so deep, I don't think the city's, has the equipment to build it on their own. It's basically, you know, it's a concrete outlet structure with some type of storm shear pipeline to Snake Creek is what it is. That would be part of it. Reason why I didn't mention it earlier, I'm not convinced totally that we have to do it. We might be able to band-aid what's there, maybe. But my concern is if we, if we look at hydrology and it says we have to do it, then we need to do it well. If I don't do it now, then hopefully we have to drain it down again and then do it, if it's truly necessary. So I'm not going to give you a complete answer on that right now as far as that structure. But at least the well would get us, I think the well's a good option.
Can I ask my legal expert on water if that's an issue? If he's any issues, let's just go on a household well to keep...
Well, like Mr. Myers says, you'll need permits. If he says it only has to come from the OWRB, I'm fine with that. Though DEQ may have jurisdiction, but the person I would ask would be Mr. Myers there at the end of the table. I think that you should have plenty rights because rights to groundwater come with your platted subdivision. And I think that filling the mineral wells pond with well water rather than your potable water, raw water source is, would be highly preferable from my own standpoint.
Right. I agree.
Excellent. That was one you said. Yeah, I put that down. I was not making notes.
All right, great, my bad. Anybody else have any discussion questions?
Excellent, that was one you were setting up with it, though. Oh, I was making notes.
Okay.
Alright, great, my bad. Anybody else have any discussion or questions? I think we kinda have an idea, it's gonna cost money.
Yeah.
So, are you gonna come back to us in a week or two and just give us a, a better sense of, is this gonna go, cost a whole lot, or...
Yes, I, I will, yes.
If council's still entertaining, and that's where, I've gotta look up some, some, um, yes, and this may be, um, a potential fund balance conversation, it's not in the current year budget, and I'm not sure where I would especially fund fifty-two thousand, that, that's the, that's where I'd probably come back to you guys and say, I'm, I'm not sure. So, um, let me start looking at some numbers, but if it's a council's, uh, direction that you really want this filled, then, um, then I need to get that, those head nods and say, we're gonna move forward and, and keep looking at how to permit this and...
I'd like to see us continue the progress forward, I think one thing, obviously, right with, we have to prepare the structure, that's, you know, but I don't, I don't think we stopped, I mean, in my personal opinion, I mean, council may have others, but it is, you know, it's one of those deals where it seems so seemingly silly, but when it's full and working and there's a fountain, and it's attractive and people like it...
Well, the fountain runs on eighteen inches of water, that's what we were told.
That's all we need?
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's...
Well, the other question I would have is your engineers, when, I mean, how soon do you have to have all this done?
Well, I, you know, that's, that's a great question, I don't, you know, obviously, I would like it done yesterday.
Two months ago.
But, wait till the spring rains, and then, of, of course, we're all counting on it.
Well, if you give us twelve to eighteen months, we might be able to get some grant funds, maybe to do a couple of, some other things with the park over time.
Well, and that may be another avenue we need to look at.
Oh, that's an idea.
Yeah.
You know, some, look at the overall purpose of the park, and maybe, you know, think outside the box a little bit.
I think we have to look at this as a long-term thing, it's rather than a short-term fix.
Okay. If you, if we give them time, we might be able to, like I said, think outside the box, come up solutions that would not only take care of the water side, but maybe enhance what you're saying, and things you're doing with the park, maybe couple it with, uh, tourism things or something.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Moving right along to number four, in our last workshop, we talked about reinstating, you'll pass that one down, reinstating public comment. From the workshop, what I gather is my direction was to take a look at how to reinstate public comment in the workshop, um, what the pamphlet is that's being passed around is, um, what we would have for individuals that would like to make public comment during the workshop, and, and really, the purpose of the, this pamphlet is to provide information about, uh, citizen participation at the workshop or the regular council meeting, if a, a citizen comes in and would like to speak at the workshop, at public comment at the beginning, uh, what I heard in the last meeting is that they didn't have to have a, an agenda item, that could be an open, uh, time to speak, um, it would be limited, I did write in there a little code of conduct, uh, that would basically say, treat others with respect, et cetera, honor the rules, okay, um, and then for the regular council meeting, uh, there would have to be an agenda item, um, so it would tie to that, so, I was, uh, attempting to, uh, meet all the needs of the council by, by doing so. Um, with that, we also wanted to educate, uh, individuals that, that were using their, um, ability to come speak at a meeting, that there's also other regularly scheduled boards, uh, and commission meetings, so if your topic specifically had to do with, let's say, uh, forestry, that we could offer, that, that, that's also a meeting that you could go to. Um, this item does not require council action, um, my intention was to start this next, on February fifth, you currently have a resolution in place, and I didn't change any of the rules, uh, for that resolution, and so, that's still the acting resolution, um, I just wanted to make it a little user-friendly for our citizens, um, and put the public comment back on the, the workshop item, um, so we don't have to vote on it, I wanna share with you, if you want me to change anything on the guidelines, if you would like your pictures on it, if you would like it in purple font, whatever is, uh, that you would like on that pamphlet, I'd be happy to, to entertain.
I'd like that bottom part to be bigger.
I bet you would, which part?
The city council is not allowed to respond to your comments.
I bolded it, would you like it in a bigger text?
Underlined.
Okay, I, I could asterisk, I could, sure.
They can understand why we're not responding.
I agree.
But I'm being rude.
Absolutely not.
Or sorry, lawyer, wrong book.
I, oh, I deleted that sentence, I apologize.
So, this will be right, right next to where they sign up?
Yes, sir, there'll be the, uh, appearance, uh, list form, um, and next to it will be a pamphlet, so that while we're speaking of items that they're not concerned about, it gives them some reading literature, it's like being in a waiting room.
Could we say, uh, just a thought, that on the print, appearance list form...
Yes, sir.
...in parentheses next to it underneath, it said, please read citizens' participation guidelines before...
Happy to.
Just a thought, otherwise they're not gonna look at it.
Well, they've got, thank you.
I think you did a great job on this.
Yeah, looks good, it looks good.
We need the people to come back and speak, so we know what to do, we gotta hear from the citizens.
And, and I wanna reassure the council that if there is an individual that speaks about something that has, uh, you know, we, we often hear about other agencies, for example, they come and speak to us about what's going on at the state, at the federal, whatever it might be, if it's something that doesn't pertain to us, um, we as staff will escort them and, and teach them, help them, that, that's what we're here to do, um, so, staff will make the, the effort, um, definitely to, um, uh, talk to that individual about whatever it is, and, and help them get to the right place, um, so, that's our role, and that's what we plan to do. I said that it's nice of you. Um, we do, we will, we will help. So, without further ado, if there's no questions about it, or if you have any changes you want, shoot it to me, and we'll start at February fifth. Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. Thank you, thank you, oh, the double spacing, thank you, vice versa. Um, moving on to number five, uh, questions and discussion regarding agenda items, we are moving good on time, Ms. Calvert, is that correct? If this watch is correct, like six thirty-five?
It'll be right, it's good.
Okay, we're doing actually pretty good, um, if y'all wanna go through the agenda for, for this evening, if you'll pull that up on your handy-dandy iPads, or Patty and I will look at our paper, um, I'll be real honest, I'm still getting used to the council as you're getting used to me, if you want me to read this agenda to you, I'd be happy to, but honestly, we probably just can cruise right through, um, one of the, the first items that I see that, that might be new to you, I do, Cindy is here from the library, uh, that's to implement the Exercise for Fines program, um, that we did that last year, and we are extending it from one month to two months, I, I believe, and Cindy, if you wanna come chat about it, I, I think this is fantastic, there's very few things that I get too, too excited about, cause sometimes we have to talk about water and things like that, but this is Exercise for Fines, I think it's a, a brilliant idea, um, it does mean that you would have to be a, a patron of the library, cause you'd have to have fines to participate in the program, so that'd be the first caveat, but, um, Cindy, if you'll have a seat, um, Cindy, tell me what Exercise for Fines is?
Um, yeah, Exercise for Fines is a partnership between the library and, um, the exercise establishments in town, so right now, the YMCA and Anytime Fitness, and, um, we've made an arrangement so that library customers who have fines on their cards can go to these places, even if they don't have a membership at those establishments, and exercise for free, um, for every fifteen minutes that they exercise, we'll take a dollar off of their, off of the fines that they, um, currently have on their card, so, um, last year, we did it for three months, and each, each, uh, establishment had one day a month, um, where that was their library day, this time, we're condensing it to two months, but each, each establishment will have one day every week, so, um, we think that that change will, um, you know, it's kind of a more regular schedule, hopefully it'll allow people to take more advantage of that program, and, um, you know, become more healthy, come back to the library, and, um, keep enjoying the library, too.
I'd like to thank you for the wonderful programs you've had at the library this past year, they've been outstanding, and the citizens loved it, and, and you implemented them, and you made them work, and I appreciate all your hard work, but...
I appreciate your support, and, I mean, we're here, we're here for the, for the city, I mean, I wanna help everybody that I can and provide good programming, and, yeah, do our best, so, yeah.
Were there any other questions, or?
I don't have any fines, do I?
Thank you, ma'am. Another item, the Girl Scouts requesting to waive the rental fee, uh, I, I will tell you, it is my role, um, I don't make those decisions without coming to y'all on those, I don't waive fees, I don't do any of that, so I wanna make sure that y'all understand that I will bring those to you when, when they're requested of me, I don't make that decision without, without your approval. Um, emergency medical, uh, service, right, so appoint a, um, and sign a contract with the, for a medical director to Dr. Robert Warden, and, uh, if y'all have any questions for Eric, he's happy to, to discuss that. Do you have any questions? That's pretty simple, um, he does look very handsome, he does. Um, the raw water main Everly Bowls, also in our GPWA, but, um, reading that one, that was, um, a bid, and that's to accept that low bid, um, another, I'm just trying to cruise through, Outback Resources, this was, um, a, a conversation, you know, y'all have already seen the agreement come forward, this is for the special use permit to place a recycling, uh, container, um, at a different location, um, this is very near and dear to me, y'all know, when y'all interview me, I spent, um, two years as a recycling coordinator, and, uh, what we see with their current recycling, uh, containers, that it's highly contaminated, that it's not very effective, um, our community is not using it as a, as a recycling container, they're, it's used as trash, and I do go by and take pictures and take a look at it, um, what, what we believe is that this, um, uh, they, Outback would be basically our contract, uh, kind of like a partnership, but not a sole partnership or proprietary, anyways, but to be our contractor, and they have people there that can watch it and maintain it, and they're going to sort it, and it provides a great outlet for, for Outback, so, tonight is to approve the special use permit, I will bring back to you the agreement with the new location, um, on February fifth, and Julie is here with Outback, if y'all have any questions, um, as well, and they do such a great job.
Did you get any response back on the letters that you sent out?
Tell me which letters I sent out.
Well, you sent out letters to the people in the area about the recycle center.
Yes, did, the planning... We sent out nine letters...
Right.
...to people living with, or to people, uh, property owners within, and we got no responses.
Okay. Ta-da.
I do.
Will it be signs, or, I'm sorry, I just thought of something, will it be signs or anything out there to tell people where it is, I mean, will it be...
Julie, you wanna come up here, we just have signage, um, today, so, I'd love for her to share that with you.
There'll be signs back by the containers, explaining what we can take and how to do that process, but there's a, a commercial sign out front that we will change, um, something simple, Outback Recycling with a recycling symbol, or something like that, to, to attract people, and a phone number they can call for information.
Okay.
And the city is gonna assist in marketing this, you know, this is something, um, that, that we're happy to assist as a partnership with them, and, and provide that service for our community, so...
We're excited, I'm, I'm excited to see it, I know I get a lot of phone calls from people wanting to know...
Well, we do too, and I think it's gonna be great.
Where to go, so I think it's a great thing that you guys are, I think the location's probably a lot better too, like, we agree with y'all that...
I think so too, it's kind of stalled the whole process, but it'll be worth it, so...
Good, when, how soon will y'all begin?
Soon as we can get the contract signed with the city.
Great, let's do it.
For clarification, will this totally replace the one at the fire station?
Yes.